Welcome, everybody, to the Blue Lake City Council Meeting. Today is April twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. Go ahead and stand for the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. City Manager Maker, would you please establish our current quorum?
Yes, Mayor Swatzky.
Here.
Councilmember Napier.
Here.
Councilmember Louis Luso.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Protam Skafani is absent and Councilmember Fire is also absent. He called and said he was sick.
All right. Does anyone wish to make any changes to the agenda?
I think, uh, on the city clerk recruitment, I'm not sure how far into detail we would go with that. Since it is a matter of personnel, it seems like it could be a closed session item.
I don't believe it meets the threshold. I mean, I think you have to be very careful about how you discuss, but if you're discussing the position and giving an update on the process to date, um, but if you're not, you know, discussing specific individuals or giving out personal information. Um, but there's kind of a clear threshold, um, for closed session. I don't believe that it would meet that threshold.
Well, we'll just try to stay on the right side of the threshold.
Yeah.
Can you keep an eye on if we are crossing that threshold for us and let us know? Thank you. Uh, does the public wish to have any items moved around? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom wish to have any items moved around? All right. Go ahead and bring it back to council for potential approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All that's opposed, hearing none, it passes. Uh, moving on to item number three, adopt previous council meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes?
Yes. First page, item two, line twenty eight. It can correct spelling, but the first name is K A T H E R Y N. If you don't mind.
Oh. K A T H E R Y N?
Yes, please, thanks. We have another. First page, item seven. Motion dies for lack of a seventh, uh, for lack of a second. On that, I withdrew the motion. Before it could die.
Uh, which page is that again?
Page three, please, on item seven.
Any other changes?
I, um, I just noted while reading the minutes that on page three, item eight regarding goal setting, and a facilitator, I, I remember having a strong opinion about wanting a facilitator, but I'm not mentioned in the notes, but in the discussion, but it's not anything to hold up the minutes about, so.
I would call that as well.
Looks like there wasn't enough people who were discussing it, so. Pack minutes.
I have some changes, uh, to page five. It's kind of extensive, but I did mean to email these to you earlier and, uh, brought. So, um, to add in after line fourteen, um, Planner Reese, uh, stated, uh, right now with all the approved and anticipated projects, the city would reach capacity at some point with its wastewater treatment plant. It is not known when that will happen. The city has had plans for upgrades to the system for years. The plan is to add a hundred and eighty residential equivalent units to the system. Anything beyond that would be some kind of more complicated expansion of the system. So I'd like to add that because that seems to be pertinent material information. And also, um, line nineteen should be, uh, corrected to say that I asked about the timeline for the up, for the planned upgrades. And after line nineteen, Planner Reese, uh, stated, within two years of adopting the housing element, the upgrades would have to be done. The city would have to fund those improvements and new projects would be charged an impact fee equivalent to the size of the project when they connect to sewer and water. And I have a little bit more where we talked about the cost of that. So, um, if I could email those to you.
Yeah, you'll have to, I'm, there's no way I'll be able to capture all of them right now.
I wouldn't expect you to. So I, I had to go back to the video to, um, to be able to take that, um, that down, so. I'll send those to you, so if we could add those in, then, that's all I have to offer.
If it's okay, I, I need to do a more thorough review, too. I thought there had a couple of things missing, but I didn't have time to review. Is it, have I emailed that to you if that's right?
Sure. And, and I think this will, is just kind of part of the, one of the things that we need to clarify is how our minutes are going to be done, because it's pretty substantial to take in that amount of comments and, um. So are you pulling the minutes then?
Sounds like it.
Yes. Do we need to make a motion to pull them in minutes?
Right. Just carry them over and bring them back next to the next meeting with, with whatever corrections would be offered in the meanwhile.
Sounds like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to do that, or is it directive fine? City Manager Maker?
I think, I think you should make a motion.
I move to bring the March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five regular meeting minutes back with the corrections stated by council members, Skafani and ABR.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you say? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, moving on to number, item number four, reports of council and staff. City Council, do you have any reports?
Yes. And I have to ask, uh, Councilmember Skafani, the name of the organization that, uh, hosted the, the talks on the, on Shore Power.
Right, elected officials for protecting America.
Yeah, that's it. So it kind of has a, a name that sounds a little peculiar, but it is, uh, it's an organization, uh, almost wholly founded by former military members. And it really came out of their military experiences overseas, seeing the desperate conditions that would force civilians into enemy combatant situations. And from that, they grew into an organization that works towards the rights and betterment of these individuals, the same individuals who could be at risk. And one of the ways in doing that is kind of, uh, in equity, I think, and power and equity in lands. And what they're doing now is they're, um, they're really essential in local, state, and national level legislation in trying to bring forward a lot of green energy programs. And they've been able to get access with, uh, you know, higher up individuals in moving these programs forward. It was an excellent, excellent opportunity to spend time and see how, with our battery energy storage system. And it, it's easy for us to look at this as a, as a small microcosm, but when you see this in a larger context of, as we look at offshore energy growing, that needs to have a capacity for that storage, the opportunities that we have to maybe be part of that larger solution. And then to see some really good people that are involved in this throughout the community. Arcata, Eureka, throughout Humboldt County. Uh, we even have some folks from Oregon. So anyway, I thought it was very inspiring and, uh, just wanted to share.
Great, thank you. I apologize, we didn't open up the, uh, comment section for minutes. Did anyone have any comments on the minutes? Great. Continue, Ron.
Uh, I did not make the meeting this month. Uh, Councilmember Skafani did.
So I did, yes. Um, about Waste Management Authority, um, we completed a, uh, staff evaluation of the director and, uh, had a first look at the budget. And nothing too earth shaking to report. Uh, with our CEA, we're going, um, uh, we're going to be having an informational meeting this Thursday, um, looking into, uh, change, uh, possible change to the rate model that would be cost for service as opposed to the current rate model, which is a discount from the PG&E rates. Um, just a, a straight percentage discount. So, um, that will be happening this, uh, this Thursday at the Jefferson School Auditorium at three thirty, if anyone's interested. It's also available on Zoom.
Great.
Yeah. I would also just report that I've been working with the, the, um, our webmaster to make a few changes to the website. That will, um, hopefully make navigation a little easier. And also, um, working with Emily and Austin to work on the, the parks and rec pages to, um, to improve that and improve access and information there. And we've made some improvements to the, to the caching system um, and the maintenance downtime situation, so that those hopefully do not be causing problems. So once again, if anybody sees issues with, um, with the pages not refreshing properly or downtime at bad times of the day, please let me know.
Great. Uh, I attended, um, a Chamber of Commerce meeting and, um, we had a presentation from RCEA. Um, they explained their role, um, as Humboldt County local, as at the local, uh, electric, electricity provider. They provide ninety percent coverage, offering renewable energy and rebate programs. Um, there's a summer mixer being planned for June twenty sixth, um, from five to seven at Perrigo Park. And, um, they're talking about doing skating for that as well. Um, there, there is talk about doing Camp Bauer as well potentially, but that's still up in the air, I believe, at this point. Um, there was the Doghouse, uh, grand reopening as well, or they're talking about that, and that's going to be Sunday, May eighth, tentatively as well. Um, they also talked about, uh, overhauling their website and upgrading their payment system for the Blue Lake Chamber. And they are planning, helping to plan for the Annie and Mary Day, uh, celebration. Um, they're talking about having, uh, the selection of a grand marshal as well as vendor applications and parade logistics. Um, that's all I have.
Can I just clarify the, the dates? Uh, May eighth is a Thursday.
Is that incorrect?
Yes, May eighteen.
Thank you very much.
I don't know the time yet.
Great, thank you. All right. Moving on to the city manager report.
Um, so I provided a report in your packet. If you have any questions, um, about the report or any specific projects, I'm happy to answer.
Great. What is the, um, deadline for SHN to be done with the project closeout on the town square? Is it done?
Uh, it's pretty much done. We're just actually waiting for, um, the old crows are going to install the shade trellis.
Okay.
And so we've just been waiting for the weather to get better, but we've, um, submitted, we have an extension, um, I think, I think it's till like twenty twenty six. But we've expended the funds and, um, have completed all, all of our reports, so it's really just that final piece, which is just a volunteer piece.
And do we have an update on when the artwork is going to be hung?
Um, not yet. Those are just kind of like the little final details, um, that once the weather gets better and we kind of close, wrapped it everything down. Because we still have a community bulletin board and some, uh, seating and stuff to, to kind of, um, move around on the, the site and get it all kind of consolidated.
And what about the bathroom?
Um, we're ordering the bathroom. In fact, we probably should order it so we can get it this week. We are hoping to have it by the first of May, so by the block party, so that they'll have a bathroom there.
And that's going to be a handicap accessible?
Yes.
Um, B and B?
Yeah.
So I was wondering if we have received any communications from Sierra regarding the sheriff's contract?
Um, you know, I haven't heard anything back from Sierra. I know that they were organizing a meeting with all the other cities. Uh, Merritt Perry from Arcata had reached out to, um, see if the other city managers wanted to get together with Sierra. So I think E-Rike is, um, coordinating a meeting with all the city managers to talk about the, the contract language. But I haven't heard anything back yet on when that meeting is going to take place.
Are all those other cities involved in the contract with the sheriff's?
Yes, yeah, yeah. They all contract either for like swap services or, um, backup services or, or dispatch services, different things.
I see. Um, and the other conversation, um, the demolition, the demolition of the cogon carbon plant is, is mentioned in your report. And so I know that there's, um, a significant amount of hazardous materials there, so I wonder who is, who will oversee the removal and disposal of the hazardous there?
Yeah, so they have to go through a fairly lengthy process to get their demolition permit. Um, so we have toured the site with our building official and our city engineer and planner. Um, they have to get permits through air quality board. They have to get permits through the city. Um, there's a whole process for the demolition. They have to show where the materials are going, what their plan is for, um, removal and making sure that, um, everything is being, um, kind of sequestered and, uh, properly. So there's, that's just part of the demolition permit process, that all of those, uh, issues have to be resolved first.
And, and so air quality is going to oversee the, the removal?
Um, air quality oversees a portion of the permit, so they make sure that, you know, if there's asbestos or lead or anything, there's a whole process you have to go through, through the air quality board to make sure that none of those, um, toxins or, uh, metals or anything get released into the air. So there's a process that they submit through their application that shows how they'll be handling that. And that's usually, um, done by specialized contractors, and they have to have all their licensing and permitting and stuff to do that.
Any other questions from council?
On the court report.
We have her report.
Any on the report?
So, this is a really busy. Yeah, I did have an ask. I wanted to follow up on a previous ask, Mandy. Uh, we were hoping to get, um, a full accounting on the activities for Prash Hall and Clement's Hall to include the expenses, staff time for this first quarter for January, February, and March of this year. And while we did have a nice four or five year retrospective, uh, my original ask was looking for just that small portion of the budget. Is that something that we might be able to do for the next council meeting?
Yeah, yeah. I, I thought Emily brought it all forward, so her information was bringing it forward to date. So would you want us just to carve out the, like a quarterly?
Yes, please. Thank you. And if we can please include any more estimates for whatever work remains, uh, for that Prash Hall Kitchen and the Clement Snack Shack. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Does the public wish to comment, comment on any of the council reports or the city manager reports? Yes, go ahead.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, in the city manager's report, it talks about, um, power transition utilizing the ERN and a letter from the city stating our working relationship to try to meet the site control threshold required by PG&E. If this doesn't meet their requirement, then they will need to wait until September to resubmit the study work. I guess I'm not really clear on how this process is different than what the city council said they were unwilling to do at the meeting when lots of people were here and you said that, uh, power transitions would need to wait to be able to show that they had site control PG&E mandates. They proved they have a ninety percent control, um, of the interconnection. So my question to the city, how is this different? And did our city council, um, approve this letter, sign this letter to go along with our ERN? And the letter to, of the city stating that we had, um, a relationship enough with power transitions to support, them being able to prove they have site control. So, uh, yeah, this, it just doesn't seem, it's kind of buried in this report, and it seems like it, um, doesn't really support how the community felt about their ability to be able to move forward with that process with PG&E. And, um, you know, so, and I'm wondering if that letter is available to the, um, to the public because it was the same thing that we said that they would be waiting until September. So I don't know if anybody can answer that or.
I'll, I'll let the city manager respond. Um, is that, you, would you wish to respond?
Sure. Yeah. So the, what the council, what happened with the September deadline, I think there was some confusion about what the, the action was. Um, the September, trying to meet the March deadline was looking at whether the council wanted staff to push forward the option agreement for the council to consider signing. The council said, we don't want to, to do it that fast and in order, um, power transitions will have to try and meet the PG&E threshold to get into the study session another way. And so the council didn't say stop the process till September because we're in an active negotiation. So there's a lot of information coming in. We're looking at appraisals, demolition costs, um, a whole host of things, uh, information that the council is involved in in negotiating with power transitions. The deadline was whether power transitions would have enough site control under the existing ERN, or if they would need the option agreement to meet PG&E's threshold to be able to get into the study session. So they, the council chose not to approve trying to meet the March threshold for signing an option agreement and said power transitions will either have to try and get in another way or wait till September when the council would have a better idea through this whole process of what direction they wanted to go. Uh, because the city has an exclusive negotiating agreement with power transitions, PG&E was able to accept that as enough, as enough of a, um, showing of collaboration with the city to be able to get them in the queue to do the site study. So the study is actually allowing them to look at the distribution system. It's allowing them to look at the capacity, what the cost would be, if there would have to be any upgrades to the distribution system, to the substations. So it's giving them more, um, kind of engineering background and costs that can be built into future assumptions for improvements.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure that the community, um, would have perceived it that way, but okay, thank you for your.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Yes, go ahead.
So the other thing that I wondered about was that this whole twenty megawatt power plant. Because the ERN says that anything that is changed in the ERN has to be in writing. It has to be put in the mail. And three or four times now, it's been brought to the public. And so does that change the ERN? Because according to the ERN, it cannot be changed unless it's done in writing. So it's a little worrisome that we just change it from the November one from three hundred megawatts, which that's why the whole city was so upset. You guys wondered why we were so upset because it originally was three hundred megawatts. But they just conveniently moved that right out of there. Now it's gone. But they forgot to re-letter the ERN. And then it went to a hundred megawatts plus twelve. Now it's down to twenty. And I've never seen, I would really like to see the signed copy of the ERN put in the notes. And I would like to see how all this got changed without it actually being done in writing and being presented back to the council.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wish to comment?
We're on four B.
I, I combined the two, so you can comment on it. Or sorry, we, no, sorry, we are, yes, we're on four B still. We'll be in com, public comment in just a moment. So last call from the public. Yes, go ahead.
So are you exploring any other options besides, like, like maybe renting, um, a portion rather than selling and then doing something, um, for space for the community and the buildings rehabbing it at all? Is there, could we possibly do some of that in the meantime, too? Well, anyway, that's just a comment or a question.
Did you want me to answer?
It's totally up to you.
Oh.
Oh, it's a city magic part? I don't know. I just, I don't know if this is the end of the.
We don't really comment in this portion, but if you have comments to make, you're welcome to.
But they are actively negotiating ideas, concepts, and things are on the table.
And that being the power plant? I mean, the, 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 the energy people, the battery people?
The, well, the council with the, the great people, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, go ahead.
Good evening, council, everybody there. Um, Julie Christie. My original comment was going to be going towards thinking, having the reports at the beginning of the meeting. I think that's super productive. Um, case in point, we now have a little dialogue that can make, um, people have discretion whether they need to really truly stay till later in the meeting and suchness. But to have staff kind of like blow it off in the way of like, it's in the packet, um, perhaps we could do some manager highlights. I've suggested that in the past. And at least cover those highlights, anything that's currently active, moving along, or is going to be popping up in the next thirty days, something so the public has preview on that. Um, Kat, I really adore and love that you're on HCOG, Humboldt County Association of Governors, after supervisors today. You guys got a lot headed your way, and I just really appreciate that you're our representative there. And please, um, keep everybody in town posted with reports from there. I sure would appreciate, um, hearing them from you, too. So we'll have a great night to unite, you guys. Adios.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. On, on the manager report, we're going to open up the public, just public comment in just a moment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. All right.
Yeah. I did have a question on the power transitions. So we see that we have the appraisal to now come in, the corrected appraisals?
Yes.
Great. When will we be able to?
You guys will be reviewing that in closed session tonight.
Okay. Saying the demolition cost, we have some stuff.
Yeah, you'll have a full reporting on all the costs.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number five. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the Blue Lake, of City of Blue Lake, that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input. Um, to assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address the items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Go ahead and open up for public comment. Yes, go ahead.
Kathleen Jones. Happy Earth Day, everyone. I'm here tonight to express my extreme disappointment and disapproval in three of the council members voting not to adopt our housing element. This is serious, people. Yes, the Botawat Community Project can still go forward and should, but without an adopting housing, adopted housing element, it will be difficult to get grants and funding. Not adopting our housing element also exposes the city to a lawsuit from the state. And don't think it can't happen to Blue Lake. The state could make us an example for other cities. I'm the only person in this. I'm the only person in this room that had to sign a six hundred thousand dollar check on behalf of the city when I was mayor the first time in two thousand. And if you think that was a lot of money now, imagine how much it was back then. This could happen again. We lost a lawsuit then and we had to pay. And who paid for the judgment? All of the citizens of Blue Lake on every water and sewer bill. For years, there was a line item, Barclay lawsuit. We paid for it. I thank councilperson Michelle and Chris for voting to adopt the housing element. When I left the council last December, I said, if the new councilpersons cared and loved Blue Lake half as much as I did, we would be fine. Three of these councilmembers have proven that you don't care about Blue Lake. I urge you to bring the housing element back up for a vote. And that at least three, one, two, or three of the persons who voted no needs to show you care about Blue Lake and adopt our housing element. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone, anyone else from public wish to comment? Yes, go ahead.
First, I wanted to give a shout out to the maintenance crew for the city of Blue Lake. There was a major stoppage where the pipe collapsed in our, right by our house. And they came right out after we had a plumber come. They had to dig up the street. We had no plumbing at all in our house and they worked till late to make the situation right. We had, you know, big problems. So I shout out to them for working overtime and doing that. The next thing I just want to say is, you know, just to say again about the ERN and that ability to be able, for the citizens of Blue Lake to be able to clearly understand what the position is and where this is coming. In January of two thousand twenty-three, an MOU was signed by the city. And in December of two thousand twenty-three, there was a little thing at the bottom that said battery and storage. Then it goes all the way through two thousand twenty-four, and it's not until October of two thousand twenty-four that our CEA comes and gives their presentation. It's crickets before then. So if it said that people should have known about this, if they were coming to the meetings, they wouldn't have known much from what was said, even at the signing of the MOU. The November ERN, I guess my question would be that I have a question about is who negotiated the ERN? Because there isn't anything in the past minutes that reflected the council gave anybody the ability to go and negotiate that. So I don't see anything there. And the November ERN, I have it right here, was for three hundred twelve point five megawatts. It says it right in the ERN, right in the recitals. So when the community reacted to that, and there was statements that we were overreacting or perhaps putting out misinformation about it, we should be really concerned about that. The ERN still stands because nothing's, and I wonder if PG&E actually would be moving forward with this if they thought it was only twenty megawatts without the possibility of any more. Because right now, your hundred and twelve, twelve seems like that still stands. If that was going to be the thing that went to PG&E to say that that was what our project was.
Thank you very much. Hi, yes, Ms. Cooley, go ahead.
My name is Linda Cooley, and I wanted to actually thank council for pausing on making decisions and looking in details and doing a deeper dive. I think that's really appreciated by everyone. It's hard to be in a new position and make a decision off of other people's thoughts. So I really appreciate that. I also would like to request, when it comes to the battery plant updates or things in there, it would be nice if someone could walk through and explain it in layman's terms. I understand that we have this little thing typed out. But it would be really nice to explain it to the community, which each action is, so people don't feel shut out and we know what's going on. I think that everyone feels we've all been fooled by wordage and assume that we know what's going on when maybe everyone doesn't, even the cleanup of the carbon plant. I would like to know all of the people involved in cleaning that up, not just their quality or the other people. That's really scary. And we're right across the street from it. So I think just a little more detail and being open about each step. And even like a monthly update if there is one and detail on what's going on. So everyone is aware and understands, and we have a chance to speak about it.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, Jean.
Hi, Jean Lynch. I was not going to talk tonight, but as usual, Kathleen and I seem to have difference of opinion on on policies for the city. And I would like to clarify that the Barclay unit was because of a bill that needed to be paid, was not paid. There was the repairs were done improperly. It it went to court and the six hundred thousand dollars, the the city lost that lawsuit that had nothing to do with the state. And the clarification of the housing units, I appreciate the council's process in discovering what it is that is going to be good for the city. It is not in in my thinking, this is my personal thinking. It isn't the state that should decide what the city of Blue Lake does with with its own property. In Article thirty-four of the Constitution, the State of California states that the people in Blue Lake have the right to say about low income housing in in an area. And I'm going to keep saying that. It it seems to be ignored. I still think any housing, low income housing, whatever the term, I know everybody wants to go around the back door on this. The people in Blue Lake should have a say on that and and the council. Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Last call from the public. All right, moving up to Zoom. Julie, go ahead.
Yep, Julie Christie again. I did get some comments from Marty last time that my voice in the room was really loud. So I hope that's not the case tonight. Zoom operations can always lower me if I am too loud. But I am going to go into some tech stuff with you guys with Access Humboldt and the audio that we have going. I think they're a great resource that perhaps we could do a little collaborating with them for in-house audio. So everybody in the room can hear all you guys speaking well. For audio for us on Zoom, even tonight, it's so hard and difficult to hear everybody. I have to stop everything I'm doing and squish my headphones full blast. And I did get anyone's suggestion. You'll be proud. But I just want to say like Access Humboldt might be some way that we could get some work to get audio better for everything that we have. For recordings, I think that's something we allocated back during COVID funds. Maybe we can creep that back out. And I just want to give every one of you sitting in the council a pat on the back. We had a lot to dive into when you guys came into it. And I seriously, you guys are the biggest breath, fresh breath air that could have hit this city in a long, long time. So please know that there are a lot of people that support you, wanting to form ad hocks, wanting you to have discussion and debate and public forums that allow the community. And so for our community, it's tough for us to have a meeting once a month, and then you get to cram in all your thoughts and opinions in three minutes. So please always like feel free to email our council people. Speak out on social media. It doesn't have to be negative back and forth. That's your own personal choice to be that way. But I think it's important that we all know each other's thoughts and concerns. Perhaps a meeting that we could be just nonchalant once a month, that everybody gets together, we kind of collaborate and so that we have a consensus of what we want to bring to our council. So just some positive thoughts for everybody. And I I definitely support our new council. I've been involved way too long, and this is amazing. And I really hope everybody else can see that this is something we all need to support.
Okay, we have a long night and let's have fun.
Thank you. Becky, go ahead.
Okay, hello. I just wanted to say I agree with Juliana there. I think that the breath of fresh air that you all have brought to what's happening now is definitely different, and it's a good thing. So I just wanted to remind you guys to go in and number one, Kat, since you like to read the ordinances, go look at the bingo ordinance, okay? Just out of your own curiosity, I don't want to put a wrench in anybody's gears right now. Just take a look at it. And another thing, I I got my public record request for the commercial kitchen. And so if anybody does want to see any of those receipts or anything, I do have a really nice book put together. But I did notice back in two thousand twenty-two where all the appliances, like the grills at the tables, gazebos, patio furniture, ovens, freezers, sandwich prep stations, those were all bought. And I don't know anything about this hood, and I'm still trying to figure that out. But I know that the one that they are using that they bought in May of twenty-three was probably not the proper one. But I just want to say that I did, you know, go through that. It's it's all there. But to me, there was a lot of overspending on things that maybe were or may not have been necessary, but that's my opinion. But I did run across one receipt, and that receipt was on seven twenty twenty twenty-two. And I'm, this is more out of curiosity for me, I guess, because it caught me by surprise. It was a five hundred dollar receipt or or a charge on the corporate credit card to kayak kayak Incorporated in Trinidad. So out of curiosity, I'd love to see the receipt and know why the city went to the kayak store and what they bought there. It was just, you know, quite comical to me to see that in there. But anyway, otherwise, that's all I really wanted to say tonight. And I want to thank you all again because I think you are all doing a fantastic job. So thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Lynn, go ahead. Lynn, are you there?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm a little confused by by Adeline's comment and also by the tone of the article in the Lost Coast Outpost several weeks ago, which implied that the city council is refusing to approve the housing ordinance. And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the council decided they wanted a joint meeting with the planning commission to study the housing ordinance, how housing element, to make sure that they were approving something that was good for Blue Lake. So my my understanding at the meeting, and I was there, was that they weren't, they were delaying the approval, not refusing to approve. So just wanted to say that I'm hoping to see evidence that there is going to be a meeting, if that was your intent, to study the the housing element. So any changes need to be made because it's been being considered for a long time can be made. And we have the best element that we can have for the city of Blue Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. All right, last call for public comment before we bring it back to council. All right, coming back to council. Moving on to item number six, consent agenda, warrants and dispersments. City manager maker, would you like to report out on anything on this or?
On the warrants and dispersment?
Yeah. There's anything you want to talk about on it or? There's no.
I don't, I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary. I will clarify that the public commenter about the kayak Trinidad, that is, was a field trip that we pay for for our summer camp kids. And we take them kayaking, and so we paid kayak Trinidad to facilitate that, so.
Any comments, any questions or comments from council?
I did have a question on RAO construction. They still have punchless items to do. Have we paid them in full? We still have some holdback on that.
Yeah, so they are substantially complete. We have about twenty-six thousand dollars remaining in the budget, and we're looking at some additional drainage improvements that we're working with Caltrans to see if we can get approved. There's some additional amenities going down, some planters and some additional landscaping going in. And then we also have a little bit of striping left. We are going to put the fifteen mile an hour zone paint on the roadway as well. So it's the the majority of the project is complete. It's just kind of final remaining items that we're waiting for approval from Caltrans to finish.
Do we have a breakdown of the PG&E invoice for thirteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's our electrical bill. Yeah, so that's all of our facilities, streetlights, wastewater treatment plant, everything. Yeah, our bill has gone up substantially over the last year and a half. It just continues to go up. So that's one of the reasons we're looking at seeing if we can maybe get a solar project on crash hall and city hall. We did a small solar project down the wastewater treatment plant, looking at possibly getting a battery storage system at the treatment plant as well to be able to harness more of, capture more of the solar and to help out with that. But yeah, it's just increased cost of PG&E.
Great.
How many different meters do we have?
Oh, um, we have quite a few. We have the city corporation yard has various meters, our treatment plant has various meters, city hall, Skinner Store, Prash, the streetlights, Town Square now has electrical. So quite a, quite a few, and we get, they all get broken down. We get separate statements for all of those. And then we just kind of lump the payment. So you'll see kind of one lump sum payment.
Do we have any natural gas?
What's that?
Do we have natural gas?
We do. Our our generator is gas. I don't know if we have any natural gas going to the treatment plant or not. I'd have to have to ask about that.
Just curious, is the like the heat for city hall is electric or?
You know, that's probably.
Probably gas?
That's probably gas, too. Yeah, honestly, I haven't, I haven't really looked at it.
Thank you.
It's a good question.
At least any questions? All right, we'll open it up to the public for comment on warrants and dispersments. Does anyone have any comments on them? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom have comments on the warrants and dispersments? All right, we'll bring it back to council.
Emotionally approve warrants and dispersments?
Second.
First and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes humanously. All right, moving on to item number seven, commission appointments. City currently has three openings on the Public Safety Commission, one opening on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and an opening on the Arts and Heritage Commission.
Correction, one on public safety.
One public safety, three on arts and heritage.
That's what I'm reading. Sorry, I'm just reading what's here, sorry.
Did I put, was I wrong?
It says the city currently has three openings on public safety. Do you want to correct that? Sorry, then if you want to just.
Mine says mission.
Did I pull the wrong page? I'm sorry, I pulled the wrong page on evidently. Let me see yours. The city currently has vacancies on the Public Safety Commission, Arts and Heritage Commission, and the Economic Development Commission. Commission positions eligible for appointments include one position on the Public Safety Commission and three positions on the Arts and Heritage Commission. The vacancy on the Economic Development Commission will be eligible for appointment after April thirtieth. Have any other comments on that? City manager maker?
No, you have, you do have an applicant for public safety.
Yeah, Lynn, I think that she was able to speak last time, last day. Was it right? Her application wasn't in yet. I don't think we had it.
Correct. She's here on Zoom if anybody has any questions. Sure, I'll ask them a question.
Lynn, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead and ask away.
I'm in Washington state right now, but I am here on Zoom as well.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Being a cert team member for all of these years, what would be one of the first things that you might want to put on the agenda for a public safety commission meeting?
Well, I would be, I have been a commission. Well, I would be, I have been a commissioner in the past, but I would be a new commissioner. I would want to know what the commission has been discussing about, so that they know about certs. If it's not very much, and I believe there are some new members, I think I would like to put an item on the agenda where we could talk about what cert was, what cert did, and explore possible ways that cert could work with the public safety commission in the future to enhance safety for Blue Lake.
Thank you. And thank you for your application.
Michelle, do you have any questions?
No, no, she's.
I would just like to say that Lynn's been a steadfast citizen and involved on a consistent level over the years. And I would like to move that we appoint Lynn to the Public Safety Commission.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Paul's in favor of appointing Lynn to the Public Safety Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Oops, I'm sorry. Let's open up to the public for comment, please. Before we have. Public comment, please.
Lynn, you might need to mute your phone at the moment.
Can you hear me, Lynn? I just want to, okay. I just want to say Lynn is Lynn is an outstanding community member. I've known her ever since I moved to Humboldt County. And we met with the pod, she got us in now to the pod, and we're going to have another new pod up on H and first in that area. And I went to the pod meeting, thanks to Lynn. And she's just an outstanding person, and I'm so glad she's going to serve on the safety commission.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from public? Julie, go ahead.
Yes, I'd also like to come in when our public safety commission. I appreciate you guys making a motion, but next time just slow down and let the public and then do your voting maybe. But for next future commission applications and items. But Lynn has been absolutely amazing. I never got to thank her for coming in recently for the tsunami preparedness awareness. And that's just what she's contributed to our community and her years of knowledge and wealth. So very proud to have her. And thank you, guys, for getting on our public safety and everybody else. We have some on economic, I believe, but again, with you guys with arts and heritage, it's hard to hold a quorum with that one. We talked earlier about maybe doing another idea of a group thing and maybe we could facilitate like swapping out something that's more productive, like the Public Relations Commission or something similar. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Point of clarity, do we take a, do we need to revote on that?
We're fine.
Okay, and we had no other people come forward who wanted to be a smoke.
Yeah.
All right, so the motion passes to appoint Lynn Glenn to the Public Safety Commission. Thank you.
We have a comment or maybe a request. I can't recall. So on the economic development one, and thank you for noting that it's not eligible until April 30th. I know that we have at least one other applicant right now. Have you interviewed in the past with us? Can we do that?
We can't do it.
We can't.
It's not agendized.
Oh, okay.
Not agendized, so. Moving on to item number eight, introduction, ordinance number 5452025, CAL FIRE severity map adoption. What was that? No, I got it. On February 7, 2025, Governor Newsom signed an executive order regarding the state's schedule to distribute the updated fire hazard and severity zone maps. For local areas, the updated maps add 1.4 million new acres of land into the two, into the two higher tiers of fire severity, requiring jurisdictions to update building and planning requirements and regulations. Cities impacted by the update are required to adopt the maps via ordinance within 120 days of the release of the maps. The maps associated with the Blue Lake were released on February 24, 2025. City staff has presented the maps to council at the March 25, 2025 regular meeting and completed the posting requirements as prescribed by the state. In order to proceed with the adoption process, staff is introducing the ordinance number 5452025 for a first reading. The ordinance will be brought back to the May council meeting for a second reading and consideration of adoption. City Manager Maker, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, so you know, this is something that's, you know, the the city doesn't really have a lot of wiggle room on this. And we're all going to be kind of working through, you know, what this means for building codes and permitting and things in the future. I believe that this is going to probably fold into the California building codes anyways. So whether we adopted it or not, we comply with the state building code. So these will probably be implemented through various different resources. Right now, we're not in a high fire hazard severity zone, but we do have some moderate additions. And so you'll see from the maps where, you know, it's starting to kind of creep in up around the Northfield Terrace area and around the cemetery area. We're starting to, you know, kind of see more of a connection to, you know, the timberlands. And so that'll be something that we'll, we'll monitor through our building official what that means. In the future, it could mean things like, you know, fire resistant roofing materials, defensible space, fire resistant landscaping, maybe fire resistant siding and materials, community outreach. Hopefully, it's not an impact to insurance rates, but we're kind of seeing that all over the place. So it's pretty straightforward. The ordinance is really, really short. But it is just a mandate from the state that we adopt this. And so this is, so, yeah, so you guys have it before you tonight for a first reading by title only. And we can bring this back in May for a consideration for adoption.
Great. Does anyone have comments on it?
I did have a question, and thank you for bringing that up about the insurance, because I'm sure for many residents, anybody who's in that yellow area and then next to it. Then what criteria in general are the insurance companies using to determine rates and risk if not this?
I'm sure this is a big part of it. I'm sure that these fire severity maps are a big part of their evaluation process. Like I said, we're not, we're not in a high fire severity zone, but you know, I think you're going to, we're just going to be hard pressed to find anywhere in California here soon that's not influenced in some capacity by the potential for wildfire. You know, we are right in the wooey. We, we participate with the county. You know, on our fire planning activities, we're part of the county process for that, so we're pretty cognizant. We've identified it in our hazard mitigation planning to look at, you know, thinning, defensible space options, increase resilience for our fire department. One of the good things about Blue Lake is that we are, this is a local response area, so we do have a fire department. So that's really helpful. And we also have a lot of fire hydrants and we have very, very good water pressure. So that goes a long ways to helping the citizens and residents of Blue Lake with their insurance ratings. So that's a, that's a big positive for us, but I think it's going to be really important for us to stay on top of this and participate. You know, we've seen what a wildfire can do. You know, we had one in 2018 that came down the hill. That was a big eye opener. I've been on several now that have started. I was on one on the river bar that, you know, took off. We had to have helicopters come in, CAL FIRE crews. We had one just on, just outside of Blue Lake on the way to Glendale that luckily, we were able to get on it fairly quickly before it took off up the hill. But we've got a lot of fuels that need to be addressed. And, you know, we're seeing high winds, we're seeing hotter temperatures, so we really have to be cognizant of that. And and some of this, you know, helps with funding. We can look at these maps and, you know, see if we can leverage these designations to help with funding for fuel reduction projects. Green Diamond's a great partner. They manage their timberland, so that's really good. That's also helpful. But it's just something that we, we really do need to stay on top of.
There's fuel reductions and the funding for that. Would that be within the town and city limits of Blue Lake? Or it would also, we could as a city apply that outside of this?
Definitely outside. I mean, we would work, you know, that's something you work with your local fire jurisdiction. So working, Blue Lake Fire, our jurisdiction is much larger than just city limits. So we have a larger, a larger district area that we serve. But it's really important to, to not just think about, you know, just the footprint of Blue Lake, but to look at those surrounding areas, because those are the areas really that are going to have the most impact. You know, we're pretty residentially dense in Blue Lake. We don't have a lot of big swaths of open land, but we're surrounded by a lot. So it's really important because those fires can, you know, they, embers travel miles and miles. And, you know, something lands on, we have a lot of, you know, older homes. We have homes with shake roofs. We have, you know. So, you know, we have to really be cognizant of what those surrounding impacts could be. So creating those partnerships is really critical.
So just one last question, getting back into the insurance and kind of taking that slippery slope perspective of it is, well, right now it's just moderate and right now it's just encroaching on some. But I would be concerned for any homeowner there that could be into this higher echelon and being faced with higher insurance at a time that we're also seeing major insurance companies fleeing the state of California. So I guess my question would be, rather than, is there a mechanism that if we felt maybe some of these areas may have been mismarked or could be improved and not at such a high area? What could we do? Basically, what can we do as a city for our residents whose homes may be in these higher echelons and be faced with higher insurance costs?
Yeah, honestly, I really don't know. This is, you know, the way the state, they have a very robust fire mapping system. CAL FIRE, you know, is looking at, you know, I mean, we saw LA, you know, burn, you know. Places are burning that we never thought would burn before. So they, they're taking this very seriously and they're using all levels of analysis from LiDAR mapping, drone heat sensing, you know, looking at aging, the age of landscapes and density of forests and grasslands and things. And, you know, they're looking at management and resources. They look at residence types. They are very cognizant of, you know, communities, like I said, that have fire districts who have apparatus on site, who have capacity. You know, they're looking at building capacity for fire districts so that we can get on fires faster with our local resources. That's one of the things that they're, that they're really pushing. FEMA is pushing that as well. But I, I really don't know. I think it really comes down to partnering with the state on any level that we can to reduce issues before they happen. But as far as like trying to push back on some of these overlays, I don't really know what that would look like. I do know that some of the cities were concerned about this process. How fast it came out, none of us were really aware of it. All of a sudden, we got a map and said, hey, here's your map. You need to adopt it in 120 days. And, you know, like I said, we're, everyone's kind of, you know, trying to figure out how this works with building codes and how we implement this and kind of what it looks like. So there's still a lot of questions, but as far as trying to work with the state, I think the biggest thing is working with them in partnership to reduce impacts versus pushing back maybe on designations at this point.
Well, maybe it'll be something the Public Safety Commission might want to look into as far as the criteria to establish these zones and the level of zones and what that mean for the residents here. Thanks, Mina.
Mandy, do you anticipate any changes to this ordinance prior to the May meeting, other than maybe coming back with more information?
Yeah.
If there's any available?
I really don't. This was that kind of their model ordinance. I, you know, we, I think everyone feels pretty penned in by this. It's really adopting the maps. It's not, doesn't really carry with it much more than that. Like I said, I think there's a lot of conversations taking place right now with the new building codes that'll be coming out and how these maps and these designations work within those codes and what those codes, I mean, those are really kind of the big factors anyways. Whatever comes out of this really needs to be consistent with the codes, because that's what we apply when we, you know, look at building permits and things is, you know, what are the consistencies? So I think there's a lot of work taking place between the state fire marshal and, you know, the the code development process to make these consistent. So we're probably just going to get hit with it on both levels.
And just as a clarifying question for both Elise and you, Manager Maker, is the, is the map available right now on the Blue Lake City website?
Yes.
And it's accessible now?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, let's go ahead and open up to the public. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kors. I just wanted to bring up that there is information on the Office State Fire Marshal website through the state of California that homeowners that might be concerned about their insurance rates, you can access information there. And I found an interesting link from the Insurance Commissioner in regards to these fire maps that were put out. And it, one of the questions is how will that updated CAL FIRE maps affect insurance availability and affordability for Californians? And it's talking about the maps were just intended to drive local planning decisions and not insurance decisions. And it goes on to talk about these regulations that were passed in 22 and that insurance companies are looking at different risk stratification categories. And so an avenue that we might look at would be to help people that are in those affected zones for risk mitigation. And maybe that's something the Planning Commission could look at.
Great, thank you. Any other, yes, go ahead.
So Barbara Russell, so could the city get loans? Could partner with the state to get loans to rehabilitate some of the houses that are older and have fireproof roofs? Maybe that could help if we could get loans for fireproof roofs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it would have been really productive for everybody in the room that if on the big screen, you could have pulled up this map so that they could actually see it. You know, not everybody goes and looks at the packet or actually get something in the face. So I would like to put a little common sense in this situation when we're looking at our city boundaries here and we're looking at the influx of fire potential spread. It is not correlated with any wind value and vegetation. I feel that having certain areas marked that are in like the northeastern terrace around the area, that's actually a very mute area of concern. We've got heavy timber in there, a lot of good fire break. While we're looking down upon the heavy wind burden areas of our town, and we don't actually have those areas marked. I do just want to throw that out there. I don't really feel like this map's consistent with actually our potential of fire risk. I do agree with city staff on the fact that we do have a lot of, you know, incidental fires that do pop up around us all the time. I've been on scene all, quite a few of them always have fire extinguishers, you guys. So I'm going to go into just fire breaks and carrying this on to maybe further study of this map. I don't, if there is any incursion on people's insurance because they're in these yellow areas, then we do need to look at this further. If there's no incursion on any residential appraisals or insurance, then I'm not so worried about these looking like generic fire lines within our city boundaries. But we all need to know what fire resistance is, and that is barriers. So the county is wiped out of money. They cleaned Glendale one time last year. They're trying to flip them from measure Z to O today, you know, and it's like, so for us as a community, we need fire breaks. Your neighbors, Chad Frizzell, I'll throw him under the bus. He's amazing. He's always looking for long jobs. My neighbor Lauren Chapman today, or last week, she was really wanting to get like the pod system going. So I just feel like community involvement is actually what's going to save us in a fire, because no offense on our outer lane areas. If we're overburdened in town and we have a significant fire in town, that's actually going to cause a lot more damage, a lot significantly and faster. So I think just always keeping in mind right now, green waste days, anything we can do to promote that we are making fire reduction within our own city is going to actually be more preventative than anything else, anything else. So please look at that map. So please look at that map though. I just would like some, maybe get somebody that actually is more involved. Like uh, I don't know who to call CalFire or somebody to get their opinion, but I don't feel like that's a very factual map. If anybody's going to be affected by it in the long term. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Alex.
Alex Rika. The two best things homeowners can do is metal roofs and hardy plank on the outside or some other variation of concrete siding that they're now producing. You put those on your homes and they have a direct effect upon your insurance. Other than that, it's all an if. Problem with the metal roofs is they're expensive. Figure about five to ten dollars a square foot. So if you have a two thousand square foot roof, you're paying close to fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for that roof. And uh, so if the council wants to get proactive on this, find a way that perhaps if you had six, eight homes at a time getting metal roofs, it could reduce it ten percent. Cause their equipment's tied up shorter. They're not moving it back and forth. Anytime you produce, you're, you're asking for volume to be done and it brings cost down. So that would be one thing. Another thing would be finding a course uh uh source for funding for, for the low income housing or people on low income who can't afford it. Uh, the other thing is, is for the city to uh come in and require new construction to have metal roofs and fireproof siding. That's just building codes in the city. Blue Lake used to have no metal roofs in down back, it came in in the fifties to prevent trailers from being lived in in town. Well, that's a passe situation right now. Metal roofs are necessary. So those are the two most important things to do to lower insurance rates and protect the homes too, those two.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? All right, bringing back to council. Um, this is just the first reading. So do we just um, would someone like to make the motion to accept the first reading? Go ahead.
Do we need the motion?
I don't know.
Okay, our motion that we accept first reading of items five, four, five dash two, zero, two, five.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, moving on to item number nine, appointment of council representatives to real property negotiations. Uh, the city is currently in real property negotiations regarding several properties in the Powers Creek District. As part of these negotiations, the prior council designated the mayor as the council representative along with the city manager and the city attorney. Due to the change in council, staff has brought the item back for council consideration and designation. Council may consider maintaining the mayor as the council representative or choose to designate another council member as appropriate. City Manager Mager, would you like to comment any further on that?
Um, yeah, so we have, we're currently in active negotiations um uh with, for the city corporation yard. Um, we have the negotiations, the councils involved in the full negotiations for the power plant. Um, and then we have the Modawatt um community project as well. Um, and so in the past, the council had designated the mayor as the uh representative for the council. Um, and I think a lot of that had to do with um the mayor's availability um to be able to attend meetings and stuff so that, you know, the business could move forward. Uh, so it's up to council if you'd like to cons- maintain that. Um, or if you want to designate other council members, that's completely fine. It's um up to council's wish.
So when you said that council's already involved in the power transitions negotiations, you're talking about the ad hoc committee of Kat and Michelle. Is that correct?
Well, you guys, as a council are actively in negotiations. Um, I mean, that's ki- I mean, that's.
Go ahead.
Do we have an ad hoc for that one too?
I think it was originally designated to Michelle and Kat.
Oh, okay.
That.
But there really was no formal one generated. I'm not sure what the formality of that was.
Okay.
Um, I think, um, I think when we initially started negotiations with power transitions, there was supposed to be like two community members and two council members. Is that not still a thing or what happened with that?
So I know that, question, I'm getting myself all confused on this. I know that the Economic Development Commission had an ad hoc, they were working um from the economic development side. And that had a community member was involved with that as well. Um, honestly, now I can't remember. I, I know, I mean, we've been doing everything in closed session on the negotiations with the full council. Um, so I don't think there's really been anything outside of that so much unless you guys can remember.
I mean, I think specifically when power transitions came to us, I think, I think they publicly stated that there was going to be uh community members on the negotiating team as well as two council members.
I don't think they did. I think we discussed it in our um meeting in December, then maybe again in January. I'm not sure. But we talked about having um, having an ad hoc committee of the council and um that would be involved in the actual negotiations and meetings where power transitions was present. And also um, having probably um sort of a sister committee that involved um community members. Um, so that community could be involved um on a, on a different level um in, in talks um and, and staying informed. So um, uh, and I, I think part of the point of this is that uh we want to have council members or a designated council member or maybe an ad hoc of two council members involved and at the table when negotiations are taking place as opposed to sitting here as a group, getting reports days, weeks or months after um, after negotiations are taking place. So um, you know, and, and of course, for legal reasons, community members can't necessarily be at the table. Um, you know, when, when an actual negotiation is happening, but they can be um in a group that is going to get informed um in a timely manner. So my, my idea of this is to have one or two council members at every negotiation meeting that takes place for each of these projects.
Would the council prefer that it's, if we were to have one, would we, would we prefer to have one person designated or two people designated or would we prefer to have it changed depending on what the project was?
I think I, my preference is to have somebody for each one and it doesn't, shouldn't be the same person at every one of them.
So you're saying individual council members for individual projects?
Yes.
Or negotiations?
Yes. I mean, I, I think it's a big burden to put on one person and say, hey, you gotta go to all these and it's all on you. And there might be more than one person interested in attending these um negotiations and being involved.
Would there any, would there be any legal risks, City Manager Mager, to having people rotate between um different um
I mean, like.
Negotiations? I mean, not, not continually, but like for a specific project.
No, I don't think so. I mean, and honestly, the, there's not a lot of negotiation stuff that takes place with most of these projects. Um, you know, anything. The big stuff comes to the full council, you know, um for any decision. So it's really just at the, usually it's kind of more at the beginning. You know, talking about projects and ideas and concepts and um, but the, the negotiating team doesn't have any authority to make any decisions. They only can bring recommendations back to the full council anyway. So um however you guys would like to have your representation, I think it's completely up to you. I think the biggest thing for us is just availability. So trying to have meetings when, if people aren't available, then it can get awkward.
If we had two members on each negotiating team, could the, if someone couldn't make it, could the other member relay information to the absent council member?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion before we open it up for public comment?
We can always talk after.
Right, we can always talk after. Does the public wish to weigh in on this item? Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
I would love to see Elise on that negotiation.
That's my comment.
Great, thank you.
And I do think the idea of having some kind of committee so that we can at least digest the stuff that comes out of. I mean, I know we can't hear everything, but at least then we would, you know, because we're sitting out here and we heard something totally different that happened when we decided to put a halt on the power transitions. I thought it was all going to get discussed and then they were going to go back in September. I mean, we were going to move it towards September. And it just seems like nothing's really happened and we're just moving in the same trajectory. And so it would be nice if there was some community involvement too. So that we kind of had a better understanding of what's really going on. So I think that's a great idea and I would like to see two council members in the negotiating committee.
Great, thank you. Any further comment from public? Yes, go ahead, Alex.
Alex Rika. The council has an apparent, has a body facing an apparent conflict of interest in the, this choice of a negotiating party with this particular issue. It's a political conflict of interest which is as valid conflict of interest as a financial conflict of interest. And so I think that reduces the options if this council wants to avoid that apparent conflict of interest. That reduces the options of the appointee to the negotiating party. I won't say anymore. You have questions, you can ask me. Like that's what I see and many people in this town see as a potential in this case, a political conflict of interest as to who you appoint. So.
Thank you very much. Um, Julie Christie, go ahead.
Thank you, John. Um, I, I'm sorry, I was kind of distracted and I might have missed some dialogue, but I already had some um suggestions for this agenda item that I was very excited to see. I think it might be more appropriate, since all these projects are independent, that perhaps we could do different uh council representatives who want to volunteer for certain projects. Am I worried about a biased opinion coming into any planning or development? No. No way. No, having uh multiple or even just one representative. Um, again, please people be free to reach out to your council members that can't break Brown's Act where more than two of them are discussing an item with you. Um, and we can totally avoid Brown's Act with having you guys on ad hocks for these um projects. And I think it was negligence of process not to have a distribution of council people amongst these discussions prior and only having uh the mayor um umbrella um the entire project process in the industrial area. So I do support that we break these up more so than just having one representative. I think that helps everybody with their time management and being able to be present and available. And would I move forward with any more projects until you're on those ad hoc teams? No, I would not. I would put my foot down. So you guys have my support. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Julie. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, bring it back to council for further discussion. Potential action.
So I, I like the idea that there's two people and that there's a meeting happening and the pri- you know, you and between the two, you can designate a primary and a secondary. Um, or you can both, you know, two could attend and if one couldn't, the other could, you know. Um, and um, you know, while I can appreciate that in some some situation that honestly I can't imagine right this second that there might be a conflict of interest, um, it's really important that the, that the community, um, that the constituents are represented in all of these negotiations from the beginning and all the way through. And um, that's part of the anti-surprise um mechanism where, you know, we don't just learn of something when it comes to council for a final decision. We are involved all the way through and that protects everybody. Um, and that also gives the opportunity, creates the opportunity for um, for ideas and uh exchange of ideas early in the process and throughout the process. So um, this is what representation, representational government means to me and um, and that's why it's important.
I, I, I like the two-person idea as well. Um, but I was curious what you guys think if you want a permanent two or if you want to select, have the council select the representatives. I think that's kind of what I'm wondering about. But obviously I want to hear from you guys about if you like the idea of having two people be available for the negotiating team.
Yeah, I'm fine with two people. I think that that's appropriate.
Yeah, and I think that's um, gives some flexibility having, whether you want to call it primary, secondary, but at least one could make it or both could come. And rather than they have a primary or secondary and then the secondary is kind of put to the side. But by having two, both could be their equal representation. Or if only one can make it, at least things are still, can make some progress.
Great.
That's good.
And then do we want to make, and then what about the, um, do you want to have a designated negotiating team? That's permanent or do you want to have one that rotates or is selected by the council?
I think we should have a team for each, for each property that is under negotiation. And it doesn't have to be the same people. It can be different people. Because I don't, I don't think the purpose would be served as well by changing um, you know, by rotating people through. Cause I think some of the same, certain threads and ideas should be carried all the way through potentially.
Yeah, I just, uh, I feel that with the absence of one of our council people that assigning anything to any, how many properties are we in negotiation with? Three, you said?
Three.
Three. So I would be reluctant to make an assignment without a full council.
City Manager Mager, are there any pressing contracts that we need to like assign people tonight or can we just have a discussion and then?
I think you guys are fine. I think anything now that um with the projects that are currently in place will come to the full council anyways. Um, they've kind of moved beyond the initial conversations and things to get to a project. So um, I think we're mostly at a point where it would be the full council's participation anyways. So if you wanted to wait till your next meeting, that's fine.
All right, clarify my statements here. I'm just referring to this one case.
I, I don't think you can come. I mean, Alex, if you want to talk, um, I, I mean, I personally would like to hear it, but I don't think we can. I, um, that's just my opinion. Thank you. Um, does the, can the council, City Manager Mager point a clarification? Can the council hear from Mr. Rika if we would like to or since we shut off public comment, we cannot hear from him. Is that correct?
Um, I believe, I mean, the process is once you close public comment, but if council wants to reopen, that's up to the council to make that decision.
I don't think that's necessary.
Does the council wish to reopen public comment?
I have no objection as to that.
Okay, um, it sounds like we wouldn't have a majority to reopen public comment then. I'm sorry, miss.
So I'd like to go forward and um, and go ahead and, and set up um some committees and, and let Chris, you know, displace somebody if he wants to be involved as opposed to holding this up until he's here. Because he has been asked to participate in other, in other committees and he's declined. So I'd rather not, you know, hold this off.
I um, to, to your point right now, I would say no to that personally. Go ahead.
I was going to recommend bringing forward a process by which if we were introduced, if, if a negotiation were to come up then the steps that would be put into motion for that team to be activated as far as being involved in the negotiations for any real property. That would be my recommendation. And I feel like that's going to take a little bit more time than what we have tonight to do that, to establish a process. to do that, to establish a process to, and then, and then move forward with assigning team numbers.
Council member here, would you like to comment?
We have a quorum and I think that we can move forward with describing a little bit more of what that function would be. It'll get a little more traction on it. Because this isn't something that we can bring up in a special meeting, right? We'd have to wait till the next regular council meeting.
We could form a, I think we can do a special meeting, correct, city manager maker? So if something did come up, we could, I think it's seven to two hours notice.
Can you give an example of the process that you're speaking about?
A negotiation is introduced and then it, the council is noticed, special meeting. We assign the, the team. I mean, I feel like there's, is there going to be a team on standby, ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, and I don't mean for a new, we have three active negoti, we have three active projects right now that should have representation.
Okay.
And it's been months trying to get this on the agenda. We're here. It's on the agenda.
So I guess, I guess that the, it would be the negotiation piece with the activity would not be really so much in the negotiation process. It would be to sit in on discussions and look at progress.
Yes.
And receive reports.
Yes.
That are already.
To be, to, to basically be on a in a sense on par with where the city attorney and the city manager are as these projects are progressing.
Okay.
So it's a council member involved along the way.
So do, so is there a specific project that the council would want to assign someone to? And, and can we assign anyone tonight?
Yes, we can, we have a quorum.
I think that the council should select the two people that they would like to have on any negotiation committee that moves forward now. Is there, is there any specific negotiation that you're talking about right now that you are, think we need to move forward that's not currently in the purview of the entire council?
All I know about are these three, the corporate, the Danco project and our transitions project. I don't know of anything else.
I would, I mean, if there, if there's one emergency, one that we have to establish the group tonight without Chris here, then I'm, I'd be willing to entertain that. But I don't think we should, should form all of them without him being here.
Okay.
So if there was a specific thing that you felt was an emerg, not an emergency, but to priority, then.
Okay.
For emergency purposes and to kind of get this moving along. Do you just want to designate two people now for today that could fit any in the moment? And then when we get the full council, then we can revisit this for specific assignments of specific council members to specific projects.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Can you restate that one more time?
Yes. If tonight we can designate two council persons to be available or to be involved in any negotiation that should come up between now and such time that may have the full council, that we can have that discussion with full council and make assignments with full council presence. So designating two council members tonight to serve in whatever capacity and a negotiating need.
Sounds great. I mean, Michelle, what do you think about this?
Yeah. Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I feel, I feel like I want all of us in if we're going to do that.
You know, this, this is, this is a first step. Let's just do something.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So are there two people who we feel would, should be on a negotiating team, should be needed?
Again.
I'll make this.
What are we doing?
I am available, willing and interested to be in the meantime. Yeah, so from there.
I'm also available and interested.
We're swiping right.
So I would also like to be on a negotiating team as well.
Great.
Do we want to take a vote individually for each member or are we appointing?
Michelle, do you want to be?
Hey, right now I'm going to hold back.
Yeah. Then for this emergency in interim, let's just have it be mayor, mayor pro temp. That makes it clean and easy, if y'all like.
Fair enough.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then the expectation would be that if there are any meetings between now and when we revisit this, that myself and John would be notified and invited to meetings.
So at what level are you thinking you want to be involved? I mean, we have like just project planning meetings that aren't negotiation based, that are staff based. I mean, is that the level that you guys want to be involved in? You want to be
I would say yes.
At the table for like, okay.
Is there any specific project that's currently occurring that we would be involved with at this point?
We haven't received anything back yet from the Iceners. The Botawat project, you know, we've talked about the separation from council because of your position as the appellate body for planning commission decisions. Power plant project. You may want to, we may want to get clarification from Ryan on that.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure, that one's pretty fluid, but that one's also coming back to the full council for, for review.
Which one are we talking about now?
The, the best project, yeah. So that's really all we have. So there's not really a lot happening that you're not already involved in at that point.
All right. So have we opened stuff to public? Yeah, we opened it already. All right, so do we need to make a motion to appoint mayor and vice mayor to the negotiating team?
Yes.
And this is only until your next meeting or?
Until we revisit the topic at a future meeting. Be it our next meeting or the one after that, or whenever we're able to do that.
We're wanting to revisit it with the next full council. So I think we would continue with this arrangement until the next full council.
And establish the process.
Sounds good. So do we have a, is that your motion?
I make a motion to designate mayor and mayor pro temp as the interim council representatives to property negotiations.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second? All those, what was that?
Bring it up. To public.
After a motion.
Does the public wish to comment on this? I don't.
We did the public.
Yeah, so there's a difference between meetings and negotiations. So maybe clarify that it's meet for meetings. Things are going on. You're going to be able to be there for what's going on, not just, because everything's not negotiation. A lot of times it's just information or stuff like that. I like for you guys to be there.
Great, thank you.
All along the way. Thank you.
We've opened, so we opened it back up for public comment. So Alex, do you wish to comment?
What I was going to say is my remarks about a political appearance of political conflict of interest only regards the negotiations on one of these properties. The others, I don't see any problem. I mean, I see problems, but they're not. You know, that would be solved in other places. But that actually is an important one, because there is a very real political conflict of interest. So, and so so if the council members who have that conflict sit in on those property negotiations that bring that conflict to the floor, four, then there are going to be discussions in town about it. That's all I wanted to say earlier. Okay?
Thank you, Alex. Does anyone else wish to comment?
Okay.
We have one more. Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to say discussions are good.
Julie, go ahead.
Thank you, John. You're actually following some pretty good procedural Brown's Act right now for the fact that, yes, you did open public comment prior. However, you guys had a lot of dialogue and then you promoted your motion. And thank you so much for going back to public dialogue again, prior to voting on your motion. So thank you very much. That's just how it goes. I do promote for now, John, let's follow through this motion with you being representative for now. We can bring this back, yes. But for now, let's motion to have John on this position like our prior mayor was. There was excuses that we maybe don't need him for what we're doing. Well, she was on it. So for now, I'd like to have you on it. And then we could bring it back as these projects develop and get more complex. Maybe we start nominating, you would be nominating your council members to, to be on the ad hocks for them. Not so much motioning for them, but you'd be nominating and them motioning them. But yeah, let's move forward with the motion tonight. I think that's the first step and that's a productive one. Thank you.
amend the motion to include language, negotiations and meetings, activities, et cetera. You'll be notified. You'll be able to choose.
Okay. Do we need a new second?
Oh, second, the amendment.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. All right, moving on to item number 10, establish ad hoc committee to address power plant issues discussion action item. One moment, please. Why, love this. So, Mayor Pro Tem Scafani has requested the formation of an ad hoc committee to participate in discussions regarding the maintenance and development of the former power plant. Mayor Pro Tem Scafani, would you like to fill us in on this? Or city manager maker, would you prefer to start?
This was Mayor Pro Tem Scafani's item. So I know you guys have discussed this in the past.
Yeah, I just feel like the power plant site is, it's big. It's complex. There's a lot going on out there and I think that it's appropriate for the council to be involved in being aware of what's happening on the site and being part of the solutions that are happening on the site. And that's why I'd like to have this ad hoc committee.
And is the ad hoc committee going to involve community?
It could. Yeah, I hadn't considered that necessarily, but it could. I'm not sure how that would work. I'm not sure how the, I mean, we haven't ironed out. We haven't discussed or ironed out any details yet, so that looks wide open.
Is the committee like intended to like explore other options with it? Is it have to do with the sale of it? What does that have to do with like community engagement?
Part of, initially my thought was to having to do with safety. And, and really focusing on that. But honestly, it's a, it's a wide open field. So I think it should become whatever the council and the community wants it to become.
Would it be better to have it under the safety commission? Or do you feel that the roles would not be overlapping?
I think that the ad hoc could work with the safety commission, but I don't think it's a safety commission issue. I think it's a council issue. I mean, I feel like the council needs to be actively involved in that property from a safety standpoint and other, and other reasons, other issues.
Is there anything preventing us from being involved as we are right now? That's what enable us to do?
We can't all five be out there and looking at stuff and talking about what to do. We haven't been. You know, if we want to. Yeah, I mean, we all went out for a tour once. But that's not something that we can do regularly. I mean, I suppose we could all, we could set aside to have a special meeting out there, but I don't know how that would work. But this is really, I don't know. I think as a full council, it would be a lot more complicated and cumbersome to do anything.
So is it possible for us to, for you to bring back your thoughts and processes and your vision for this ad hoc committee, whether it includes community, what the goals and objectives would be, what the process would be for meeting and that kind of thing and bring it back to council for consideration?
I don't feel like I need, I don't think this needs to be a super formal thing. I mean, I, I don't know. Again, I'm kind of, I'm wanting to move forward because I've been asking for this to be on the agenda for the last five months. So I feel like it's important that we take a step and move forward and we can iron out process and protocol as we go.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And you're invested in this. I'm, I'm trying to understand what is it that the council would bring or achieve in an ad hoc that looks at the maintenance and development of the power plant site? We're talking all of it, including the chip field? Or we're talking the part that's just also the part for the best agreement?
No, I mean, the whole thing, the whole 22 acres.
And so just to repeat, how would the council contribute or be informed through this process?
I think the council could learn about identified hazards, learn about mitigation ideas and costs. The council could then appropriate funds to mitigate certain hazards and safety issues rather than waiting for power transitions to do something or the demolition to start or, you know, something else to happen. We could identify high priority items and, and direct that those things are taken care of sooner instead of later.
So your scope is again, directed at safety?
Primarily and initially, safety, yes.
Any further comments from council before I open it up to the public? All right, moving on to the public. Would, does anyone wish to comment on this item?
I am very excited about this because I think a lot could be done with a shovel and a wheelbarrow and a dumpster and some volunteers. At first you guys can go and check out the scope and there's different levels of safety and some stuff that's just mess. And it's a good way to identify that. So just talking about it in a room, I think it's great. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Any further public comment? Yes, go ahead.
Hello, Lisa Hoover. And yeah, I would like to see a committee like that. But it also, I think it would help look at cumulative effects, which y'all have heard me use that word before when you're looking at just this site and that site. So just thinking about considering, and I'm, I'm a little bit more concerned about the environmental safety as well, but environmental. So I think the idea of getting the council involved at that stage or that level of, would be a good idea. So I would like to support that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
I think the idea of a committee is a good idea. I think that if more than one council person is on that committee, you're creating problems within the council itself jurisdictionally, Brown Act, all that type of stuff. You still have to come back to the council meeting to get off the official business and legislate response to it. That has to occur in a full meeting. You can't do that with two people behind the thing. So you're building in a difficulty with that. Just the consideration, not that it can't be got around, but it will be a difficulty for you. Other than that, I do think the Public Safety Commission deserves Other than that, I do think the Public Safety Commission deserves a seat at that table. Otherwise, why do you have it? And uh, I think that person should be selected by the Public Safety Commission. When it comes time to form this ad hoc committee. Other than that, I think it could be very helpful. As long as all sides are represented and all sides have equal say in it till it gets to the council. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Julie, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I hope you guys can hear me okay. Um, I do support this ad hoc in the manner that. Um, we can still have to counsel people on it and obviously, John, with your already. Getting approved with the prior agenda item overseeing kind of stuff like this, it would be probably more appropriate to like, you could. I mean, I see the supervisors do this all the time, um, but you could be on there, that's fine, and somebody else. And then we could bring in like the community as to finish off this ad hoc. They did it in um, the. Uh, uh, planning commission with the power um, storage battery stuff. So even maybe um, combining. Who was already on that ad hoc with then having the representatives from. Um, the council because I, I understand with the safety um. And, and but they also kind of are up that same alley, you know, so we already kind of have an ad hoc with their thing that. Got allowed, okay? By the way, we've never had an ad hoc where community was allowed to participate. So I appreciate that staff allowed that, but in the, in the, in the past, that's never been an option. So perhaps this could be a um, gap there that we could bridge with um. Council and community in the regards of whatever way you want to shift this, but as far as having two council members on there. That's not a big deal and even John could be on it on the other one. That's not a big deal either. So you can check with your lawyer on all those specifics, but I do think we should move forward on it and we should move forward on it in a way that. Uh, we, we have some um, collaboration because I think there's other entities that already got going. That would collaborate really great back to the council and we could kind of pull the strings together is what I'm saying. Instead of um, doing this and that and this and that, let's pull some strings together. Like uh, Ali said earlier about the consistency of a certain person. That is very important because the timeline is just more efficient. And I trust all of you to keep a efficient, non-biased timeline. So that's why I'm making these suggestions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Last call for a public comment? Yes, go ahead, Justin.
Justin, I just wanted to make sure that you guys clarify your actual scope because I heard it said initially, safety. I would like it clarified by your actual scope of, of this is going to be. What's your limits? Where do you stop? That kind of thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further comment? Yes, go ahead.
I've just heard it discussed in among the public and among myself and people that. I think people are concerned about the chips. I think people are concerned about the structure. I think people are concerned about the safety of the site. I think people are concerned that we've brought up so many times the demolition, but never really heard what that means. And the actual environment, you know, we talk so much about there being poisonous environment out there. And it would be nice to know if there really are like soil tests that have been done. I mean, those kind of things could. Really be looked at and brought back to the public. So we have a better understanding of what's really going on with that site. And when, you know, we talked about if it's gonna be a million dollars. I mean, what is it really gonna be to clean it up? Because we don't seem to have a clear picture of that kind of stuff either, so. That's just been discussed with different people in the public. I think everybody's kind of interested in knowing what those things mean.
Great, thank you. Any further public comment? All right, bringing it back to council. I think it's this time, I'll let you go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I think at this time, I'd rather have an ad hoc scope out what this ad hoc will do and have specifics before we. Form this power ad hoc. Um, I'm just, I just want to know what it's gonna do and what its scope is. If we're, if it is truly just safety, I would be willing to entertain that. But I'm not, I, I just want it, I want it kind of scoped down before I would be in favor of an ad hoc.
Well, I think that safety is a priority. I think that's the number one priority. Um, but I think that once some of those safety issues are mitigated, that um, that this ad hoc could branch out and do a lot more. And um. Yeah, the ad hoc could do, you know, could, could begin to address the fuel pile, could um, could brainstorm ideas to start to reduce the fuel pile. Could um, you know, one of the ideas I had a long time ago is we don't have the ability to drive all the way around that plant. Why don't we hire somebody with equipment to go in there and. And create a road around the perimeter so that the city can go in there every day and drive the perimeter of the plant and make sure everything still looks okay. That all the fences are intact, that um, you know, that there doesn't seem to be anything out of place, this sort of thing. You know, it's just, it's just putting brains on the problem and, and the more, the more people we have um, trying to solve problems. And looking at potential solutions, the better chance we have of solving things. And it involves a community and it creates security by involving the community. So and having people aware and participating. And that's, I feel like that's always a good thing.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anything that you're saying, but in order to involve the community, I'm feeling like we're going to need to. Do some outreach to invite community input. We've, we've had some community input. I think all of us have received emails about. Concerns, ideas, suggestions, et cetera, which I think is great, but if. And the, if an ad hoc committee. Scope, purpose. Definitions, uh, other things could be moved forward, then there would be some other. There would be a way to elicit some, some interest and from people who may not be here or there. And um, maybe for further discussion, I just, I'm not sure. You know, like, that's just my thoughts. I don't know that forming an ad hoc tonight would do that. But that's my, those are my thoughts.
You gotcha. How about forming an ad hoc to do that? I don't want to do it. I don't want to try to do it all my own.
I, I'll, I will say that I will be happy to work on an ad hoc committee to design. A purpose, a scope, definitions, et cetera, to bring back. And to have some more concrete ideas on moving forward with communicating that to the community.
Perfect. Should you and I do it together?
Well, that's, I, I'm happy to do that. I would just offer that up.
Thank you.
If we need a motion to do that, that's fine.
I think, do we need a motion to form the ad hoc to the ad hoc? I think we've done this before, okay. I would like to make a motion or just do you have to designate the ad hoc folks?
Either way.
I'd like to make a motion uh, to point council member Louis Luso, council member Skafani. To uh, form an ad hoc to define a scope. Purpose and ways to have community participation. For purposes of. The.
Second. Open it up for public comment. All right, bringing it back to council for vote. All those in favor say aye. It passes. Moving on to item number eleven, um, commission agenda coordination between council and commissions, discussion action items. One moment while I pull that up here. Righty, um, council has requested a discussion item to address the agenda setting process for the city's commissions, Mayor Sawatsky. And um, just so you're aware, uh, it was uh, council member Louis, Louis, uh, not Louis Luso, uh. Name here and I who worked on this, not um. Skafani. Um, so I came up with a draft blue lake um, agenda setting process for us to essentially. Comment on um, between us and commissions. Go ahead and, you know, give some feedback. It's not a final draft. I mean, so go ahead and just give input on it and um. I'll actually open up the city manager mega for input first and then.
Um, I would just caution you um, to look at your timelines and the amount of extra work. And what that does also to commissioners, their availability, um, you know, just being volunteers. Um, it's a pretty. You know, starting three weeks before meeting to start working on a process to develop an agenda, just. You know, thinking about either availability and um, that's kind of my own comment.
Does the council wish to comment on it?
I guess I have a question. I want to hear the uh, how this, what is this looking like when you're talking about the commission and the council and agenda setting? How does that? What is, what does that look like?
Well.
I mean, other than what I see.
What I've seen is we kind of have um, arms and tentacles going in many different directions, doing many different things. And if we're able to coordinate, and if I'd like to take a really, you know, thousand foot view. It would be, we could look at the course of a year. You can look at known significant events. You know, for an example, budget, budget finishes out at the end of July, not to say that it's relevant to commissions, but you know, that's. Um, we know the end of June, sorry, will be processing budget. Uh, we know that some of our contracts, I think, like this is in September. Um, looking at these important deadlines and dates and activities and saying, okay. What is it that the council might be doing at that period of time? And we've, some of our agenda, we could cast out further than just a couple of weeks ahead. Because we know those activities are going to be dependent on some type of a deadline or they're constrained by it. And then the other part is we have five commissions out there. And they're kind of going in different directions and it's, you want to have that bubbling up of ideas. But if we can also have that in coordination with the council on some of the agenda items. Um, it'd be wonderful for the council to be able to, you know, put forth like to the economic development commission. Um, you know, can you put together some projections on the corporate yard? You know, can you look at what it would look like if we did nothing? Or if we were to develop it or the, the cost to replace the, the corporate yard building. Uh, and some of those can be tied into timelines that follow contracts or other activities.
It seems to me like um, sort of a master calendar and kind of looking uh, you know, at the whole year. In a way. Where you, where you map out some of those, some of those target deadlines. And, and also some of these commissions um, have a lot of meetings that don't happen. Some of them mostly have a meeting every month. Um, there's gonna be um, you know, I think it's. I think rather than waiting till the last minute to cancel a meeting because you don't have a quorum. Um, maybe giving the commissions um, some planning scope. To where they can say, yeah, well, you know, everybody sits down and says, okay, I'm on vacation here and here and here or whatever. And so we're not going to have a quorum for these months of the summer, but we might for these and um. You know, because it seems like it's a lot of staff time, you know, for each meeting. Do we have a quorum? You know, and posting cancellations at the last minute um, or just showing up and not having a quorum. So it'd be nice to, to put in place some of the, some kind of. Some kind of advanced planning, so um. So the commissioners know when they might need to be available and can plan. For, for months that won't have a meeting.
I guess um, it seems like rather than developing. An entire process around this, we can, we could shorten the process and request reporting out, reporting out from the council to the commissions. Reporting from the commissions to the council on a regular routine basis and anything that was identified as something that was going to need further discussion. And involvement with the, with the council and be um, requested to be brought back to either a special meeting or a council meeting. Like a standing agenda item, for example. Uh, in, in many meetings, we have. This, this department reports out and it's a standing item and anything that needs to be brought back. And so if we, anyway, that's just a thought. Coordinating a little bit and then we wouldn't have to worry so much about. Scheduling, you know what I mean? With who's, who's meeting when and how many people are going to be there and that kind of thing. It's just a thought.
I think my goal with it is just to develop more um. Not cohesion, but communication between our commissions and the council itself. And so this is just some framework to bring forward for. Uh, ideas. Um, city manager maker, sorry to ask, but in uh, did, did the other documents, did you? Were they not pertinent to the discussion and, or I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just.
On what other document?
Uh, there was two other documents that were included in the email. Um, that it was, it's fine, we can, we could, we can talk about it another time.
I think I, I only. This isn't the whole document?
There was another attachment. It's okay. Don't worry about it. We can, we'll, we'll bring it up as part of our overall.
Okay, I think I may have missed it. I, I thought this was.
It's okay.
Was the attachment.
It's totally fine.
Okay.
So anyway, um, do you wish to make any other comments on it?
Well, um, my understanding, you know, um. The uh, tentacle analogy notwithstanding um, is that the council would like to have. Would like to exert a little more direction in the directions that various commissions are going. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
We don't want to control them, but we want to be able to have a clear um, definition of um, communication. Is the way I put it, like feedback back and forth both ways. Is, is my goal, is my goal personally, but.
And Kat, is that also yours?
Yeah, I, you know, I think I've seen um, from some of the commission meetings that there can be a bleed over. Where you wander from what that scope of that commission is. Um, and as an example, and I, I appreciate the work that the Economic Development Commission does and, and all of the commissioners. But it isn't the place for the Economic Development Commission to review the safety of the battery energy storage system. And then it seemed unusual to me that they would call a town hall to present that information. And with council not really being part of that process or not having a public safety commission. Being the commission to look into the safety of the batteries, I feel like it, it kind of skewed our ability to move that project forward. Um, this is something that these pieces I would think should be coordinated together, council and commission together. So that we are kind of on point with each other. I also see that commissions are a great resource. It's not, it's not possible for, you know, even. Even if all five of us divvied up the work and the amount that we have to research and to really deep dive. Um, I don't know if we could keep up and we kind of, my view is I'd like to be able to count on the commissions and say, hey, we'd like to be able to put this on the agenda. You know, this is something that you guys can take on and, and bring that information back. I mean, that to me is kind of, you know, that. Larger picture of whether it's developing policy or riding to a decision is that having that ebb and flow between commissions and council. It feels like right now it's just severed and they're working independently and in a fractured kind of incoordinated way. And to reiterate what John said, and if you have those uh, packages in front of you, these are just like a jumping off point. This is like, well, what if, what if, what if? So it doesn't mean the agenda timeline will end up being three weeks and so, and we're going to yes or no vote this. It is, what would it look like if we took? More than a two days to develop that agenda? Or what would it look like if we involved a council member or a liaison or the staff member in the development of these conversations?
Would there be any kind of issue with the liaison communicating between the commissions?
You know, I, I mean, I'm honestly looking at this. I mean, you guys are getting involved in a lot of layers of the process. And just thinking about like, do you really have the capacity maybe between ad hocks and, you know, all your other duties with council and the other. You know, liaison positions and, you know. I don't, it's, you're, you're taking on a lot. It looks, you know, there's a lot of layers being proposed through all of this. One of the things that we have always done with the Public Safety Commission is they do an annual work plan that gets approved by the council. So they come and they present their proposed work plan. Council talks about it with the commission. They revise it, add projects, whatever. Agree to it. And then that's kind of their marching orders for the year or, you know, and other as items come up, you know, I, I use the commissions a lot. For resources. They all have an area of expertise that I rely on a lot for, you know, presenting ideas and getting feedback. A lot of times they do a lot of their own research and bring stuff back. So it's a really great way for, for, for me with limited staff to, you know, increase that capacity. But maybe having a, a yearly work plan for each commission could be helpful. You could have a working session with them to talk about what. The council's goals are and how that translates to, you know, the commission's capacity. I don't know. I, that's always worked really well for Public Safety Commission.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from council before we open up the public?
I just, I think again, for processing and for communication, it would be nice if there was. Something like a referral to a commission. If we, if we had a project that we wanted some special expertise with or some assistance with and maybe we could. Move with a referral to that commission to get the assistance that we need and the resources.
Which then the liaison would carry down to the commission. Is that correct or?
Sure. Or we could have a, another process. If, if that's not effective, we could certainly look at different options as far as either be the liaison or it could be. A simple request form, a motion sheet or a, you know, a referral form. Like we have for, you know, submit that through. City manager, city staff or however. Okay.
I, I like the idea of the liaison being part of setting the agenda and part of the communication. And. I think if we have a discussion on a topic and we at the end of that discussion say, hey, we should have ex-commission help us out with this. I think we should ask all those commissioners to review the video and. And observe that discussion in its entirety. And then it goes on their next agenda and they know of that. They know what we said, what the community weighed in on and, you know, that's a jumping off point for them. You know, the, I, I rarely see commission members at this meeting and maybe they all are watching our, you know, maybe they're all at home with their popcorn watching. And maybe they're not. But, you know, it'd be great if we could, you know, have a really easy boom. Here's a video. Check us out and tell us what you think. Dive a little deeper. Here's your rabbit hole. Go. What did I call you? Sorry.
Wait, wait for your turn. Wait for your turn. There we go. All right, we're going to go ahead and open up for public comment. Alex, would you like to be the first one?
Great discussion. Okay. I'm addressing you as a public safety commissioner. That was November I was appointed in time for the November meeting, which didn't happen. So what's that? Six months, five months? We missed the, we missed the first two of my meetings. We had one in January. We had one in February. We missed March. We had one in April. Okay. And all those absences were done basically because there weren't enough members. We had three for the first two and so on. So there wasn't anything in the commission itself causing those. But it was the delay in the change of council and so on, getting the appointments made. The next meeting we have will be the first time we have five members in my experience. So I really think. Trying to plan three, four weeks in advance isn't going to work. I think that it's right. Just wait until you have to. I think that just emergencies happen. And, and you can't plan on that. I also think I'm, I'm. Not one who favors concentration of power. I like to see. Power disperse. Now. I feel Elise has done a very good job as being the liaison to the Public Safety Commission in my experience. I think what Michelle just proposed about the referral and so on, I think that's excellent. And that would enhance, you'll get. More active members playing along the. Game plan you would like to see the city proceed on that you five decide the city is proceeding on. If you incorporate as many people as possible from the beginning without giving them anything other than the problem you want solved. Okay. And maybe where the leads are in the state and so on. In other words, let them, let the commission members start bringing information to you that they dig up. Without you filtering it beforehand. Okay. You may not like it. You may love it. It doesn't matter. They're bringing you the information that they feel is needed. Get them to participate in it by being as generous as possible. With what you refer to them. Giving them, empowering them instead of the council. Doesn't mean they can do anything that you do. They can't. Everything still has to run through you for it to become official policy. Trust that structure. And enable one without that ability to do it. And you'll find your account, your commission members last longer, are more involved, more excited. And be generous to them, even if you disagree with it. And have. I, I think the other thing is an annual meeting with the mission and the council. Is a good idea. Okay. Just to talk about the past year, talk about the future year. I would like better communication. But sometimes I don't even know we need communication until it's already given to me and it could have been before. If Elise would, I, I was sitting here and I thought, well, maybe a public safety commission ought to have, as, you know, you have council notes or something. Have the liaison have a handful of time. In our, in our meetings to report to us from the council, to a report what you wish from us. And what the information you bring us and what you'll take back to them. So, you know, I think that's the way to fix it without any grand operating. A thing and get the commissions filled. Get the commissions filled. So, thank you. I was interested in it. I liked the ad hoc, ad hoc. That was great.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Barbara.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea for there to be more communication and collaboration and maybe even between the commissions. Like I think that arts and heritage can support economic development. Like with these ideas and events and maybe fundraising, if there's a budget crunch, it's great for us to work together. We're all working. For, for the betterment of Blue Lake, like, like we're the finger, like, anyway, the, I don't, I'm not going to say all that, but like, you're the head. And so I, I think that you guys need to. Be in touch and, and everybody working together and excited about it. So I think that's a great thing that you're, great idea.
Great, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think it's a great idea as far as having, when I was reading through this, the, over the weekend. It just seems like the idea of there being more collaboration. I appreciate what Kat said about, you know, sometimes that research part of it is really hard. And there's sometimes a deep dive. And so it seems like that communication between the council and the commission sounds like a great idea.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Moving up to Zoom, Lori, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Um, one comment about the audio, it, it's kind of choppy. So I'm not sure if I'm choppy to you, but the audio coming out, it can be. I, I think I asked probably in the fall about. Having commissions report to the council. So this was probably prior to some of the new council members. Or the newer ones that, that are here now. Because when I've attended some of the commission meetings, sometimes there's a council liaison, sometimes there isn't. And so if there isn't one, then there's no report. At the council meetings, which I think is unfortunate. And I think that the commission. Chair. Should be reporting to the council at least one of the maybe two meetings that you guys have. A month. I think that would be helpful. It seems as though the commissions. Are. Not necessarily solving problems. They may be hearing information at their, at their meetings, the last Economic Development Commission meeting. That I did, wasn't able to attend, but I did go back and, and review the recording. The commissioners were gathering a lot of, or hearing a lot of information about the, the battery storage and that kind of thing. But it didn't seem like there was a give and take kind of dialogue. So I'm not quite sure. When the commission meetings are happening, that there is a give and take, if it's not just information gathering. From, say, the city manager's. Information that she wants them to hear. So. You know, I, I don't, I, I kind of, I, I support the, the idea of having. You know, a, a sort of a playbook on how this should work with the commissions and the council, because I think there's a lot of important work that. The council needs that the commissions can do. I just would like to see that the commissions are actually. Doing some work for the issues that come up at their meetings. Not just being told information and then the appearance that they are actually. Working on something. Not saying that the commissions aren't. Super valuable because they are. And I, I thank everyone who serves on a commission. Because it is, it is a volunteer position and it is time given. And I think we have some really good people on all the different commissions. But I, I kind of don't feel like they are. Doing as much as they can. So I think you and I, I apologize for going overtime.
Lori, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
Are there particular mics that are garbled sounding? You were saying that there was the sound quality was.
It just kind of, it just kind of cuts in and out sometimes.
Okay.
It's not super clear. So I don't know if it's the system, you know, it, it takes time to work the bugs out, but just. And I apologize for coming in late. My granddaughter's team did win. So Blue Lake has another little league win in their, in their back pocket. So anyway.
Thank you, Lori. Julie, go ahead.
Thank you, John, and thank you for the gamble tonight. That's just what we have to do to keep point of order and. We could have the timer back out where everybody could see that. I think that would be a good point. But I'm going to go into the fact and I'm just being blunt. I have got all my critters. I'm running around. Thank you so much for Zoom. And Justin, recording all the meetings over the years. So if you miss any of our commission meetings. Justin has a great archive for the recent last several years. Bless him for that because that was paid by patrons first. Now he's on with the city. Employment. But I want to say this. Our council is voted in by the public. To represent the public and your job is then to vote in a mayor and to hire a manager. Your job then is to dictate down to our commissions, your wishes. So the other month we were getting rebuttal to our council from staff that. You guys are the ones requesting these things and you shouldn't have that much involvement because you already requested them. Well, you have not. And that's where the shift needs to come as of tonight. The shift needs to be that our council is now requesting our commissions. For these items of discussion and. Research and that they can then give back a recommendation to our council. Now, planning commission is an exception, obviously, within its regards. However. All other commissions listed, it is our duties of our council via our public. To correlate our, our, our projects, our concerns, our, our relations to what we want developed. And I want to see that come back. We've been, I, I just have never seen it and we need it. That's the law of the land. That our council requests of our commissions what they would like to see researched and brought back. And so from now on, let's just make sure that our council, elected by our public, is referring to our commissions, what we want researched. And what we want recommendations back from, not staff. That has been the negligence of prior councils and I have faith in this current council. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further public comment before we bring it back to council or discussion? All right, coming back to council. If it's okay with everyone, I would suggest that I take the input that we received tonight and then formulate another draft of this and. And then bring it forward to council at a later time, me and council member Naveer, and see if, if, if we would like to potentially. Implement it in some other way.
Sure. And I like the idea of having a joint meeting. And that could be like one giant work session where all the commissions are asked to come and meet with the council, or it could be one council. Designated to attend a meeting as a full count of, I mean, one commission coming to a council meeting. Every, on even numbered months or whenever, you know, where we have a, you know, within the council meeting, we have a, a meeting with a commission. And then also there's, as somebody mentioned, there's plenty of commission meetings where there isn't a liaison present. And I think that's a failure of the liaison. Not remembering to notify their alternate that they need to attend. So maybe, Mandy, maybe we can have staff help us out with that. Maybe do a quorum check, you know, maybe do, you know, check in with the liaison before a meeting and. I don't know. I mean, we're all adults and we should be able to, you know, notify our alternate, but sometimes things happen and people forget. So.
Since you brought that up. Yeah, I'm the secondary on the Economic Development Commission and I think there's at least two, maybe three. At the primary. Wasn't in attendance, but I haven't gotten any notification. And I certainly would like to be able to attend if the primary can't. Can we maybe work on a process for notification?
I think we can do a future agenda item on that. I mean, I don't think we can direct staff to that right now. I mean, unless you feel, does the council feel it's related to this draft proposal?
I think so.
Yeah, for, to coordinate and communication and my report out, what, I would just say that my experience has been that. City staff has notified me as well as Elise for public safety commissions that were assigned to.
Some of the times I get an email, some of the times I don't.
Oh.
I didn't get one for the last meeting.
Wow.
But.
Okay, I guess maybe not consistent. Maybe we need that process in place to make sure that that does happen. Certainly, I hope that I've not missed a meeting that I was supposed to be at.
So, um. I can put that in our draft agenda. So I can put that in our draft agenda and city manager maker, would you mind alerting? Staff if, if we know about an absence or. I mean, I think the council member should be able to do it ourselves, but it also, you know, I guess as a backup, it'd be good. If city gets notified as well. All right, any further discussion on that? All right, moving on to item number 12, city clerk recruitment discussion action. Pull it up here. The city council has been recruiting for the city clerk position. Actions today include the following designation of an ad hoc committee, development of a job description. Development of a fly, of a recruitment flyer, advertising and application review and inter, interviews. And actually, we're going to take a quick break. I apologize for introducing the item. Do you mind if we take a quick break?